If he would come and open us up in prayer today.
As everybody is standing, we still reverence the story of God.
Great.
Let's just go to Lord in prayer. Father, we thank you for these men and women that make decisions for us here in this town. We thank you that your spirit rests upon its place and that the decisions that are made here have some resemblance of you being in our presence. Now, this is important to us in this day and time when it seems like the world or this is pushing you farther away. We pray, Lord, that these halls will always be hollowed with your spirit and that your presence will be here and that you will guide us and give us the right decisions to make in everything that we do. God, let the council, Lord, be at a place where some nights will be sleepless as they try to wonder and ponder their hearts to see what is the best decision to make for us. But, God, we thank you most of all that your spirit is present here. May it always be here. And we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
First flag. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I'd like to welcome everybody here to our council meeting today. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Moving right along. First thing on the... First thing on the agenda is Mayor Chester to present proclamation.
Is anybody from the library here? I don't think so. Uh, this afternoon at four o'clock, there'll be a book signing at the library. And at that particular time, we are doing a proclamation for Timothy Alexander and Tim Stevens. Tim Stevens is originally from Fort Payne. That's the way it goes in high school. He basically is the writer of this book. Tim Alexander is the subject of the book as well as helped in the writing. And for those of you who don't know, Tim Alexander was a football player at UAB that got injured in a car wreck and was... Became a paraplegic and was extremely helpful in getting the sports at UAB reestablished that they voted against, you know, get away with several years ago. And it's an inspirational book. At least, I know that Tim Stevens will be there. Hopefully, Tim Alexander will be there as well. Four o'clock at ten. See the library, ten o'clock. Everybody's welcome to come.
It is my understanding that Tim Alexander will be there.
Hopefully so.
That's what... That was my understanding.
Hey, good story. Very inspirational story.
Okay, we've got... Do you have those?
Go to number three.
Number three? Okay, all right. Good deal. All right, we have Landon Fant representing Toys for Tots to present a plaque of appreciation to the mayor and chief of police.
Hey, I'm Lerue Hardinger and I am the coordinator for Toys for Tots for DeKalb County. Excuse my... Ronnie throat. This is Landon Fant. He's medically retired, but he's a combat veteran and he's my assistant coordinator. And he's going to present these for five years of support from the city. There's one for the city, Fort Payne, one for the mayor, Larry Chester, who have been there the first five years right behind us, providing places, space for us to sort and bag toys and some of the expenses that goes along with that. Just knowing the cities behind us means a lot. And also, we'd like to recognize the police department because they give us a lot of security during those last three and four weeks when we're covered up in toys and makes us feel a lot safer when we're counting money. They're always out there in the parking lot.
Randy is patrolling the school today. Thank you very much.
By the way, these read 2017. We are in our sixth year, like I said, now, in appreciation for your five years of support to the Toys for Tots campaign. I just wanted to mention to the place she prayed to buy them, but we weren't accepting. It is for the entire council, the past council members that have supported us. Thank you.
We ought to be thanking these folks instead of them thanking us because they've done a terrific job over the last few years. All we did was basically provide them with a place to work out of and what happens. They have been congratulated, will be congratulated, and we thank you very much. It's amazing how much work these folks do. Not necessarily, not just Toys for Tots, but the Marine Corps League and everything that they've done to help us in times like this. So, thank you very much.
Along with the mayor, I want to say thanks for the job that y'all do because I can remember a few years ago when there was nobody to take the Toys for Tots and, you know, there were several years there that it went lacking. So, I appreciate what you guys are doing with that. So, Mayor, if you will stay down at the podium, we will let you present the retirement plaques to recent retirees from the city.
Patrick is butch here. Okay, you need to come up there. Let's start out with James Budgwick, thirty-six years of service in the sanitation department.
Wow. That's amazing.
Thank you. Twenty-four years sanitation department, Tim Rotten. Michael Gibson, thirty-six years sanitation department. I said the same thing again. You're a lot older than you thought you were. Thirteen years. One clinic man. We could relay that to the retirement service that worked out well. Fire department. You want to do it? Bear in Westbrook, twenty-five years. Tommy Evans, is Tommy here? Fifteen years with the fire department. If I got this right, is it forty-eight years or eighty-four years?
Eighty-four.
Kenneth Bryan, forty-eight years. And he wants to work hard for it.
Come to work when he was four years older.
Yeah.
Terry Knowles is not here. Twenty-five years with the police department.
That's amazing, guys. I would just like to say thank you from the council.
Yes.
That shows so much character and dedication on your part, but it also is a reflection of our city and our departments, I think. So, thanks for all you've done for us as citizens and for the city itself.
I'd also like to say on behalf of the council and mayor's office that I appreciate the fact that our sanitation department for I don't know how many years has been 100% in UGF fundraising. Not all departments are that way and not all organizations are that way. But since we have three of them going to the House, I just want to tell you, I appreciate you giving to UGF as well and being 100% for several years. So, thank you. Okay, next, we have Connie Fuller representing Fort Payne Main Street to address the council. I think she has passed out a...
Hi, I'm here to ask... Well, I just want to give you a little background. This grant for Susie Parker Strangefell was started a hundred years ago and... Well, the grant wasn't, but the foundation was. And it's given through the community foundation over in Anniston, Alabama. And Judge Cole brought this to our attention at Main Street and thought we might be interested in it. And I have to say, it just kind of spoke to me. It's a 100% grant. We get $10,000 to do this. And it's a way of honoring her for starting the first TB hospital over in Anniston and it eventually became a regular memorial hospital. Fortunately for us, TB is like, you know, not around much anymore. So, we have tried to find a location that has to be handicapped accessible. I have a team of people working with me. Steve Malcolm is here with me and, of course, the director of Fort Payne Main Street and Donna Chesser and Tominal working together as a team with me. We need permission and a letter of support from the city to put this bench that they will provide. We want to build a little area that is a reflection place for people to go and it'll have a reflection journal there that's waterproof. They provide the journal and the bench. All we have to do is provide the area around it. It has to have four parts to it. It has to have a sense of surround. It has to have a portal. It has to have a path and a destination. And of course, the destination is the bench. We looked at several locations and we found one in the walking park. It's up toward the back, so there's handicap parking right there near the Davis House in between so they could get to it. It's where that big tree is in the back. It's in the center. We've had David Isbell looking at it for us to come up with a sketch. We don't have a sketch yet, but it would have the bench there in front of the big tree and we would have a path and it has to be natural materials going to the bench. And we would, of course, have the shrubs and all. We're going to be working in partnership with a lot of people. We... I know of two... They're giving away two grants to each of the nine counties that they serve. And eventually, they will develop a trail for all the benches. So, it will bring in people from other places to come to do the trail of the benches. It's a hundred-year legacy honor for her. Instead of throwing a big party, they thought they wanted something more physical to honor her. Do you have any questions or anything for me?
Would there be signage or something directed people to the bench by going Main Street?
We could do that if you wish. There will be signage saying that it's in honor of her, but it won't be huge signage. But we could do some type of signage for that. But it's just a nice area for people to go and reflect in.
We could add that to our wayfinding signs.
It'll be promoted with the tourist department as well.
Right, because we'll be on a trail eventually. It doesn't have to be done until 2020. The grant is due March the 15th, so I am kind of like on the edge of urgency here just in... There's a lot of things that happen. The reason I haven't been to you earlier, but anyway, it's due March the 15th and they will decide in April who gets it. There are two others in DeKalb County that are applying and that they're in Mentone, the Mentone Cultural Arts Area Building and St. Joseph's.
I would think it'd be unlikely to give both to the same community, but it has happened, I guess.
It has happened, but we're hoping that we get one of them.
Tim, do you hear Greg? See any... Stumble block with this?
It's 100%, we don't have to match anything, so...
What about in 10 years?
In 10 years, in 10 years, they plan to do another grant to the ones who have already gotten it to refresh the area. We have to maintain the area and that's one reason we wanted to put it in a city park because that would be a little bit easier to maintain, but also, you know, if we need the master gardeners or somebody to help or the Boy Scouts, you know, Main Street, we'll go over there and pull weeds, whatever it takes. Also, it had to be handicapped accessible, so we had to think about that.
Do we need to authorize that? Got a motion? Second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You need a letter of support, right?
I do need a letter of support with permission saying that we can put it in the city park and also that the city will help to maintain it.
City park or the walking park?
The walking park. Alabama walking, Alabama walking park.
One thing I like about this project is the serenity kind of part of having, providing a place for someone to go be quiet, which is unusual in this time and age, and it's really something I think we need for our community in a world of craziness. A place where people can just go reflect and that book will be there for anyone to see or write in, correct?
Oh, the journal, yes, absolutely. And they'll replace it. And like I said, in 10 years, they'll upgrade and help us maintain it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Connie. Appreciate it. Okay, moving right along. Ordinances. Our first reading of ordinance 2018-02, amending ordinance 2004-14, the alcohol ordinance to allow sales of alcoholic beverages during certain hours on Sunday. This is our first reading of that. Okay?
It'll lie over until the next meeting.
Resolutions, 2018-06, declaring certain city property surplus and no longer needed for public or municipal use.
This is the cooler that's located in the MapCo building that we purchased, so we need to dispose of that. I'll send out, run an ad in the paper, Bradley, I'll get with you. Part of that in specification will be to remove from the premises, the cooler.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
You got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Seven through 12 are low bids that we opened last Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, whenever it was. Wednesday. Tim and I, Robin, everyone else that had bids open, we reviewed them. The low bid was the lowest qualified bid, so my recommendation is accept.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Does that accept all those?
Seven through 12.
Seven through...
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, 13, authorizing tax abatements for Tech Class Incorporated.
Good they always do.
What?
This is good they always do.
This abatement, just like the others that we have passed, sales and use tax abatement and property tax abatement. Of course, if you... We didn't get the company, we wouldn't have this anyway, so it does help us out. This company is a new company. They'll be in the building where Plastics Extruders are now and oil strapping. They're basically bringing in one machine to make a new type of plastic matting that would... Trying to think of the term for it. Be soil bearing and keep soils from eroding, things of that nature. The company is a British company and I've been trying to get hold of the owner for some time, so I had him cornered about our property that the city owns adjacent to that building and that triangle we've been trying to acquire. So, hopefully, this will go along with that and that'll make our property rectangular in shape rather than having that little corner cut out on it. The city's portion would be over... Property taxes over a 10-year period of about $4,000. And initial sales and use tax would be $3,500 that would be abated. So, that's basically... There'll be no employees for the first one year and then they will be hiring three employees. They'll be using the Plastics employees to get started with. Then they hope to grow and bring more machinery in in the future.
Initial capital investment of $350,000?
$350,000 investment. And they've been a good manufacturing company in Fort Payne over 40 years, starting down here behind Sonic and then eventually moving up to the north end of town.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Thank y'all very much.
Thanks.
Timmy, I'll get the resolutions ready. Pick them up maybe tomorrow or whenever.
Okay, yeah. And the agreement, we got sent into anyone. They're back.
We'll just wait and you can bring them and I'll have ready.
All right, we have continued discussion of renovation proposals from Tony Rintum. Good to see him here today.
This is the proposal on the police department and the Forest Avenue building for their studies and proposals to get those buildings ready for renovation. So, we talked about this last meeting, but you've actually got the proposal and you're packed it there.
Want to speak to that, Tony?
Yeah, the initial part of the proposal for the police station is the environmental study for the existing police station and the Forest Avenue school. So, before we wanted to make any assumptions on what could or could not happen, we first want to make sure it's safe to do anything. So, the initial proposal has nothing really to do with us. It's the architect, the interior designer who work on the programming for the spaces and the environmental engineer who'll come and test the sites to make sure they're feasible for any development, no matter what that use is.
What is the programming?
Figuring out the appropriate square footage, the uses, the public and private access for how you come and go from within the police department because we got to have separate interests depending on who's coming. So, the interior designer who's worked with us on some other municipal projects, including Mount Brook, will look at the square footage needed for each division within the police force, onsite storage, offsite storage, private access. There'll be... They have other behind-the-scenes investigation rooms they need. They might have a different way to come and go from within the police station and the jail itself. So, that's all the programming is really figuring out the square footage and where it goes and why. So, the interior designer and the architect will meet with...
We call it reconfiguring. How to best use the building.
The programming also...
For the departments that exist.
Yeah, that's the problem. One department's in a building that used to house five.
Right.
And they've kind of morphed over the years and this would basically say, here's our police station, here's how best to use it.
And then getting it up to code compliance as well. So, this is the initial study. Can we do something environmentally if we can? How would it look? And then once we figure out how it looks with the program, then we can give it to contractor and figure out what a presumed... An estimated budget would be for construction to see if it's a feasible project for the city or not for both sites, for the school site and the police station.
So, this study would actually let us know if it's, you know, worth going down that road to...
Correct. So, the programming would be able to identify square footages for different uses. You know, it's going to cost more if we renovate the jail versus office space. So, the programming and the plans go along with it. The architect and interior designer will give it to contractor to do some initial construction estimating, so then we can present those reports to city council to see if it's a road that y'all want to take further for the renovation.
By doing both of them together, I think it helps us in the position that we're talking about possibly if we have to renovate down there and move them out for a while. If we're doing this building at the same time, that gets us in a planning phase to how to fix this further to move them into. And then when they move back, we've still got this space where we don't have to go change a lot of stuff. We do it one time.
Yeah, right.
Ronnie, there was something I was looking at the other day myself and some members of the police department that you may or may not have been upstairs.
Yes, sir, I have.
Would it be a possibility or do you know, have an opinion on about moving the police department upstairs while... Or renovate the upstairs and then move the police department upstairs while you renovate the ground floor there on Seventh Street?
That's really what these plans will do. They'll dictate if we can or cannot do something like that. If they come in and do the initial... Because they'll do surveys internally for all the mechanical, structural, plumbing, everything else. And if they deem that it's more affordable to do it all at once and move out, we'll know those numbers. If they think we can stage it, they'll know. Again, that's... That'll be outside of my scope. That's with the architects and interior designers and the contractors and engineers.
Look, that would be... It wouldn't be as much chaos as moving the police department up here.
Because part of the programming as well is if we do that and it's not accessible, how is that going to function as a city building? And the jail has to stay active the entire time as well. So, part of the programming is how can we phase the building for such that manner? So, it might be that they move to the front or back. I don't... Again, I don't know that. That's what the study will show.
That will show in the study.
Yes, sir.
And I think regardless, we want to do Forest Avenue.
Sure.
Whether we use it or not.
Yeah, and the cost went down as well because the environmental engineers will be here at the same time. So, they did it as kind of one project instead of two to get the cost down for mobilization and studies. So, if you decide to do that and down the road and not do it as part of the police study, it would cost more money, obviously, because of mobilization.
Make a motion, we proceed.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to proceed with this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Tony, do you have a contract or is this the contract?
Well, we have the proposals, but if you need us to go forward with any contracts, just let us know.
We'll contract.
Okay, I'll get everybody to put it into one contract with also consultants for you. Yes, sir. We'll get everything to you. Anything on the MapCo, any to answer?
Not in here. We talked about that last week, but that's not in here, the proposal for the MapCo.
Is it PD and Forest Avenue, right?
These are just that, but we also got a proposal from Tony on the MapCo. He's recommended an architectural firm to look at that, do that, so... Uh, he's recommended an architectural firm to look at that, do that, so I don't know if y'all downloaded that proposal, but we need to make a decision on that fairly quick since we've got the building ready to start doing some stuff on. So, if you're not ready to do that today, we can study that and deal with that next council meeting, but I think, we think we need to proceed on that, because this sure is looking good, Tim.
Well, there's a lot of buzz.
Yeah, there's.
About it. I think it'd be great to get something done.
And it would be real good to get that cooler, so we get it out of the way.
Yeah.
Because we should be able to do that by next council meeting, and that, when that was proposed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have the cooler gone, but...
Yes.
But the architect did on the proposal, since we haven't surveyed the building yet, is he did a lot of the mechanical and structural systems, it's kind of designed, built with a contractor to get the fees down. And so, he's ready to go, he don't have to wait on getting proposals from all these other subs. He'll bring them in, once it gets, well, again, we'll figure out the price, they'll do the drawings, they'll be ready for permit, once we know the cost for renovations, you know, we'd have a lot of back and forth with the council, obviously, on the design. Uh, but nothing would proceed unless we knew if there's gonna be additional costs for any kind of cleanup for the site outside of the environmental that the current owner's taking care of. So, they're ready when y'all are, just let us know. Well, we'll do the same thing. Got any questions on it? Let me know. I can get them back up here to talk to you. I told them I'd represent everybody today since I was already here, but if you need them up here, just let me know, and we can get them.
I think we're all looking at different ideas, kind of, we need to kind of come together.
Yeah.
Get an idea.
And I think that's what the first part should be.
Yeah, for the MapCo, don't we?
Because the images on the strategic plan that was presented last month, that was that architect. That's the one we brought in to look at it. He's, he's very creative.
Lot of excitement about that since that drawing came out. I, I really didn't look at that space that way, and it, everybody that I've shoved it to is just really excited about making that into something like that, and...
Especially the walkway to the left that goes down and centers the depot.
Down the depot.
Kind of connects all that together.
Beautiful.
I stood over and just looked both ways a lot, the last week, and if we can incorporate the design of that building into something that kind of bounces off of the coloniron and the depot, it's, it, I think it's gonna be a really nice space for people to sit and enjoy downtown, especially if we take that intersection and make it our first redo.
Yeah.
Has it been surveyed yet about the turn radius?
Tim's talked with Aldott, and, uh, they haven't been here yet to actually develop that plan. We, he can tell you what we gotta do there with the permitting we have to do, but they have agreed to take that corner off, but we got a, a major utility relocation to do there. If you go by there and look at it, you'll see that the major thing there is the phone lines. If we could get them to take that phone line on the south side of the intersection down to the park and then come across at an angle, we've been eliminate that pole in the front door of the coloniron building. So, that's hopefully what we're gonna try to do, and then let that bear first intersection with the two big traffic lights, swing arms, make that our first new intersection, do all that at one time.
The mayor and I probably need to meet with Aldott again over that and go with that proposal again and try to get that moved.
Yeah, I met with, uh, Cooper last week, and that was discussed, uh, and there's some other things discussed that might have a bearing on this, so we'll, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, I think that's kind of...
I did want to ask you a, a little bit different angle, uh, the TAP grant, for instance. Uh, I know the time is, uh, getting close for those to be filed. Uh, are you handling the downtown?
Yes, sir, uh, the engineering group we brought out of the Shoals area that's part of our team has, and we got an update. I think y'all might have gotten an email this week, everybody at the council, the mayor, Hope, from her, they're supposed to make the announcement for this round of TAP grants at the end of this month, and they've changed their application for next year, so it starts April first. So, instead of waiting multiple months to find out if you want to reapply, you can just reapply to the same project or the next phase of the current project. So, there'll be a lot more streamlined going forward. So, that's coming up in April, so...
Well, there's nothing that we've got to do to apply for that, basically.
No, sir, not at this moment. At, uh, whatever.
We've already applied for that one, but, but next year...
We're just waiting the year now.
April for budget and process. It was kind of odd, we, we had to apply for that in the middle of the budget year, so they've changed it now, so April one, those, those open up for application, but Kelly said that we've pretty much been guaranteed we're gonna get the, the TAP that we've applied for, and it is from Fourth Street North to Second Street North. And we can apply for a tag on to that after April one and go from Second to wherever that will go next year, which will go straight in line with what we're talking about, because we've been kind of talking about doing from Fifth to Fourth ourselves this year to, to do that. So, if we start at Fifth Street, start working our way south, we're gonna do a block, we got two blocks on a grant, and hopefully get two more blocks on a grant.
That's both sides of the road.
Yeah, so, that's, that announcement should be officially coming pretty soon, but April one, we can apply for the next, next year's TAP grant, and getting one approved helps you get another one, because you piggyback on those and keep going until you finish the scope of the job.
The initial, what, sidewalk, water line?
Well, the, see, the, the water park's gonna put in a new water main, but in conjunction with that, we're gonna redo the sidewalks and the curbs, make all the intersections handicapped accessible. Instead of those chutes running up, they'll be totally rounded off, which is the way they're doing now, where all four corners of an intersection would be handicapped accessible, which is...
That's just water line, that was...
Right, and, and actually what Tony had talked about also is redoing some of the parking stuff, and like the bottleneck down there, we can do some things there that will put crosswalks in the proper place and let parking work around it and make them safer and line them up with different things, and, so all that is incorporated in that first TAP grant, and then hopefully the next one will be two blocks on down, so...
We're already coordinating everything with Aldott, on everything with traffic and crosswalks. We'll go ahead and start coordinating some of the signings plans that have been part of the, of the longer vision, so we can get the same permits on at the same time. Just, there's no reason to do it twice, which is part of the same package.
Right.
Well, also, we do in our sprinkler, we change all those lines out there. They have problems with the leakage.
And, and the plan for the water line is not to be in the sidewalk. We had discussed that before, but what they're gonna do is they're gonna come right outside the curb and gutter and put in a three-foot berry and put new services to all the people as we redo the sidewalk, so that will be, everybody on the west side of the road will get a new water service, new meter, it'll be in a new sidewalk, and the water line will replace a hundred-and-eight-year-old line that's eight feet deep in places out in the middle of the road. So, hopefully that will eliminate that issue from, from now on, so, and that will work with us on the TAP grant, so...
Well, since we're doing that, have we asked Tony or anyone to do a design for the sidewalk? I mean, what it's gonna look like?
That's incorporated in the, in the TAP grant.
It'll be part of the plan.
That is the design and everything.
If the grant comes forward, we'll start with some kickoff meetings.
That would be Kelly's group.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
While, while the engineering group's working on some of the permitting and some of the...
Utility locations and design.
And we'll meet with the council in Main Street and whoever else we need to, to start doing the, the design that we see, this time is above grade. So, we'll be working concurrently with them to make sure everything aligns properly.
I know another project, just that, I know Main Street wants to work on too, is some sculpture or some art downtown, so if we could incorporate some locations for that to be in that too, that'd be great, if you guys are in agreement with that.
I think now's the time to put it all together.
Yes, while we're working on everything.
And one thing we need to do, I talked to Rocky Friday, you know, we had some questions about the contract with Kelly. Those are kind of being worked out, so if we need to authorize Rocky to proceed with that contract, we can do that today, because that grant's fixing to be awarded, so it's all good with him taking that on and doing that. I think we can do that today.
Need that as a motion?
We proved that prior, maybe.
I think it's already been...
We approved it contingent on him, so if we're good to go, y'all, that's all I'm telling you, is he's, he's pretty well working the issues out on that contract, so if y'all ready to proceed, then I think he's ready to proceed.
Okay.
Which will work good, because we got, if we get the grant, we gotta have that contract approved, because she will actually be doing the design for us and everything.
It has to be under a P, uh, cert, uh, certified engineer, so she's, she actually did the grant submittal, so if she's not part of it, I don't think the grant's...
Yeah. So, I think that's in the works of being finalized, so...
Good.
Next one's gonna be...
We need to contract them.
Okay.
Thank you, Tommy.
All right, we're gonna skip over number eight, uh, because we may or may not, we've got more discussion on that after this meeting. We may or may not come back into council meeting. Okay, authorize mayor and city clerk to sign authorization for city attorney to accept service for logging case.
There's been a complaint now filed regarding the, the ordinance that we did on the, restricting the logging on the side of the mountain. Um, what this is doing is just authorizing us to accept service on behalf of the city to accept that complaint, and will allow us to file an answer.
To reply, kind of reply to... You got a name on the plaintiff?
Uh...
Back here, back here, Ryan.
Yeah.
Who?
Lauren, Ryan and I.
Lord.
Right here, Lord.
Oh, okay, okay.
Ryan and I, Travis and Lord, and you'll see the acceptance of service that we have filed in the N two. So, you're just authorizing this to accept service on your behalf, instead of having a truck go down the circle.
And this is the case that we actually made the logging...
This is the property owner that wanted to clear cut side of the mountain.
Right, so we expected it.
Previous council put that on hold and moratorium, and then we, in the time since then, have enacted an ordinance that he's saying is more restricted than he can go by, so he's suing us. So, I'll make a motion, we accept service.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, mayor, you have any report?
I'll be brief. I know last, uh, council mentioned the dog bill that was, uh, up in Montgomery. Uh, after reviewing that bill, and, and it probably will pass, it is a punitive-type bill that allows you to do certain things, uh, after the fact. Uh, I personally feel like that, uh, it's not proactive enough. I don't feel like our bill is proactive enough, so I'm just asking each one to look at what we got and see if you really feel like we need to do some changing or what have you. Uh, I know that the last council, uh, would not, uh, go along with the lease law. I was hoping that the new council would, but that depends on y'all. And I think there's some things, there's some things that could be done to make a lease law work, uh, I really do, but we won't take that up today. There was a bill introduced in Montgomery that, uh, the in lieu of tax bill, or in lieu of TVA taxes, uh, to go direct to the state instead of the counties that the property was in, and let the state decide where to send the money out. And I'm glad to say that bill died right quick. I think everybody in North Alabama called and complained about that, so, anyway. I met with Aldott, as I mentioned a while ago, primarily concerning Highway Thirty-Five and Airport Road. Uh, I go see them at least once a month, let them know that we're still here, that we still need them. Uh, they've been promising me a funding agreement since, uh, last summer, and basically what they run into is they have to consider that whole thing as one project, uh, the two entrances for the interstate as well as what our intersection, so they're having to do all the inter, the engineering up front. The, they won't turn loose federal money unless they do it that way. It's gotta be within so many miles that they've gotta go away. So, that's the reason they say we're not, uh, proceeding right now, but they still tell me it looks like they will be able to start this year on the Highway Thirty-Five, so I'm hoping that. We talked about the turn that was mentioned, uh, and, uh, they are, they're willing to work with us on that. However, Cooper made a suggestion, because at one time we talked with them about, uh, trying to reroute some of the truck traffic through town, and he proposed rerouting Highway Eleven, uh, if we desired to do so. It would not fix Highway Thirty-Five traffic, but his proposal was reroute Highway Eleven on the north exit down the interstate to the south exit, keep it out of town. That'd be a very workable situation and easy to do, just for, basically for some signs, uh, but it doesn't address the Highway Thirty-Five problem. So, I think that's something we need to talk about, and, uh, if, if we could address the Highway Thirty-Five traffic at the same time, then it might eliminate the need to make it wide turn, but, uh, everything's just kind of talking stage right now. Uh, the old hospital, I have a petition that, uh, we have been asked to, to circulate. Uh, this is for a CDVG grant. A TACOG seems to think that it would be very helpful for us to have as many signatures as possible on this, that it would not only help us get the grant, but they feel like it'd help us get more money. So, in the next few days, I'll be, uh, passing out these petitions, ask everybody that's, uh, has anything to do with the city, you know, as far as, there are citizens in Fort Payne to sign that petition, and we're gonna farm them out throughout town to various businesses and school system, what have you, and come up with as many, uh, petitions as we can. Uh, it's, it's still a very, very workable situation. I think we'll get it, it's just a matter of time. Uh, we had the, uh, fire department has one employee who is now certified to do hazardous, to survey hazardous material, and that's been done. Uh, hadn't gotten all the results of it yet. Uh, we've got to have an estimate on what it's gonna cost to remove that hazardous material, and we've gotta have an estimate on what it's actually gonna cost to take the building down, whether we do it, whether we contract it out or what have you. That's gotta be a part of the grant proposal, so we'll be working on that. Uh, Thursday, Bobby Welch will be back in town. Uh, everybody knows Bobby, and, uh, he's gonna be talking about what kind of enclosure that we need to build in order to put his artwork in, and I've asked Johnny and Lynn to set in on that, and, and Buck, because I figure Buck will end up building it. Uh, and you said you couldn't be here Thursday, but you can Friday, right? So, we'll try to do it Friday. I'll let you know whenever Bobby gets back in touch, and that's all I've got right now.
We moved that one in the hallway?
I honestly haven't been out there, I don't know.
Stand here. Yeah, did we move it?
It's not been moved yet.
Well, you need to move it, don't we? Didn't you tell me it was blocking the handicap accessible?
Yeah, it's not giving enough clearance to get up that aisle right there.
Okay. You know, we talked about just sliding it back down the hallway a little bit.
I, I recently talked to Buck about moving that hatch over to another aisle, getting that over there and that kind of offset, so, and, you know, probably need to coordinate that and get it done and then get it moved.
So, basically, if you're interested in seeing in, any type of Bobby Welch's artwork, there is a piece on the forest side, Forest Avenue side of the building in that lobby area, but it's gonna be moved because it's in the wrong space.
And by the way, I have a petition here, if, if anyone wants to sign it while you're here, well, it's available.
Can we get that in the papers to promote that?
Yeah.
And possibly have them at the papers?
Right, I, I had planned on having it at the papers, uh, all the banks, uh, the various stores, grocery stores, what have you, and, uh, we've asked the school system to distribute the water system, the power company, everybody, get as many as we can. I don't know anybody that wouldn't want to sign it. Everybody wants rid of the place, and all it, all it says is, "We, the citizens of Fort Payne, Alabama, do hereby request that the city of Fort Payne proceed with efforts to secure funding through the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, which is a HUD, CDVG program, in an effort to provide for the demolition of the abandoned and dilapidated DeKalb General Hospital located within the city of Fort Payne."
Rex, send it.
If anybody would want to, wouldn't want to sign it.
All right, does anybody in the audience have any, anything to address the council Does anybody in the audience have any, anything to address the council with today?
I'd like to.
Walter?
My buddies, all my buddies up here. I really appreciate all of you guys and the position that you hold. You guys are honored and you have a difficult task in front of you. I'd just like to say, there's something that's important to me as a citizen. As I sit on the council chambers in 2004, I remember us having a discussion with the city and the members here about the sale of alcohol in our city. And like Lynn said, it may have caused some families to have some discussions that were a little heated, but we still held to tradition of allowing the people to have a conversation concerning whether we wanted it here or not. I was on the side that opposed it. I was also on the council that had to, had to come behind after the vote was levied and determined that we wanted to sell it. So, my job was to be sure that we controlled it. Before we did that, I remember, I think Andy was there too, I remember we had to draft an ordinance, and that ordinance would kind of explain how we would govern the sale of alcohol. And in that, we wanted to protect the day that some thought would be sacred, and that was Sunday. So, because of that, those leaders decided, let's just draft this and give it to the people and see if it'll help move it forward. At that point in time, we did do that, and I think it was a factor in helping it to go because we said we would protect something that's sacred. I don't want this conversation for you guys to think that I'm against the sale of alcohol. We have it here and we do an excellent job of making sure that Fort Payne remains Fort Payne, but it's about something that I'm concerned about deeply in our nation, and that's removing things that are sacred. I think God has blessed Fort Payne. I think God has blessed America, but I think if we continue on a path that could probably restrict Him from blessing us by not following and obeying some things that He told us to do, we could put ourselves in a dangerous spot. I think about the story of the frog that was in the kettle. We all know that, that they put him in the kettle and he didn't really know that the tent, the owner was to eat him, you know, so he turned the temperature really slowly and after the frog found out that it was, it was not in his best interest to be in the pot, it was too late because he couldn't jump out. I just don't want to see our city turn into that type of environment. I'd like the people to have a say. I'd like to thank you guys for not having a decision today where you would suspend the rules. I know you guys could vote on it. I have to say that I was at a council meeting and I remember, I was at a forum and I remember the question was asked, what do you think about sale of alcohol on Sundays? And I think everybody, mostly everybody, I think Johnny said not at this time, you know. So, everybody was honest and they tried to be, you know, forthright how they felt, and it was a difficult question to answer, you know, trying to be elected. But I can remember the majority, I think Wade's statement stood out the most, if you can't get it done in six, you can't get it done in seven, you know, so. It was a little bit surprising to me when I came to a council meeting and knew that it was going to be back on the docket again, but after I heard that it will be sent to legislators and allow the people to have a say in it, I kind of rested a little bit. But then I found that it was, it was sent to legislators and perhaps with the theme of if you really want to get it pushed through, it's better to let us redraft it so you guys will have the authority to move this thing forward. And then the weight came on, whether you would actually do it or it's going to be, if you allow it to go forward, perhaps there's going to be some yam, 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 yam that goes on. Well, I would like to say, please let the yam, yam go on because that's part of my yam, yam, because I really think it's important. I think it's a sacred day, and I want Fort Payne to always be blessed, and it's those little subtle things that I hear about when I read that there's somebody that's trying to take in God with trust off the dollar. There's somebody that's trying to move one nation out, under God, out of the pledge and lead. So, everybody, these people are just raising up out of everywhere and trying to turn our nation into something that it wasn't founded on. So, those little bitty subtle things that I think that takes away and chips away at our patriotism and at our morals of this country, and I don't want us to be a part of it, but I'm just one citizen, you know, but I wanted to come before you guys and say, I definitely appreciate the job that you do. I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you today, and my prayers are with is that God will continue to lead you and guide you along the path that keeps His presence alive in Fort Payne. And if somebody comes to Fort Payne and say, we don't like it because you don't have this or you don't have that, I hope that we can say, yes, but we do have the blessings of God on our city. It's more important than anything. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you, Walter.
Anybody else?
I'm the mayor and council. So glad to have this opportunity to speak to you. I'm in agreement with Brother Walter. It's one of those situations where as a Bible believer, I really feel it necessary to stress the issue that we're going to stand before God, give an account, and, you know, to stand before Him, and we had the opportunity to stand for what is right, and I believe the observing Sunday and worship, acknowledging God, giving Him time, because in our society it's so busy. It seem like people forget about God, but, you know, I know this is just a small thing when it comes to the sale of alcohol, but I believe we're still acknowledging the fact that we reverence the day as unto the Lord, and I just think that's something that we appreciate very much if you would bear that in mind when this time should come around and you have to vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Walter.
Anybody else in the audience want to address the council?
I'd like to make a comment on what they had to say. I recall during the forum being asked would I support the sale of alcohol on Sunday, and I said no, and I still believe, by the way, and I still remember what I said, and I don't intend to support it. And, you know, when it passed in, what, '02? Four? Whatever it was, it was prior to me being on the council. But that went to the vote of the people, and I agree with what it said, you know, I really think to change this and this matter, it still ought to be a vote of the people.
I just don't say. Thank you for allowing me to have this opportunity to stand and say a brief word, you know, it's already been said. You guys went out and you asked the people to trust you to run the city of Fort Payne. And the only thing we are saying now, allow the people to say to you how they want alcohol and everything else to be distributed in our town. I mean, that's all we're saying. You know what Brother Walter, when you pray, I would listen to him, and he said one of my, said something that's true of one of my favorite scripture verse in that proverb three, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart; lean not to your own understanding, nor anyone else. But in all your ways, though not your loyalty, He will direct your path." And that's the only thing, allow the Lord to direct your paths and not someone else. When you stand up for the Lord, the Lord will stand up for you, and that's a known fact. And so, I would say and we, and praying that this council right here will have the Lord directing their path, and then that 14th verse says, "And be not wise in your eyes," excuse me, that's six, seven, "be not wise in your own eye for the Lord and the pardon of his, but there is a way that seems right unto a man, but there is a way of death thereof." And so, I say to you today, ladies and gentlemen, you got, the decision you have got to make not easy, but allow everyone to have an input on it. They voted for you, now listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Anyone else have a comment, question for this council? About the council?
Make the motion go to executive session.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive council? Yes?
Yes.
We appreciate you guys being here, being part of our council meeting today.